So you sit down and then I'll see.
How's it look?
Um, no, you're okay. It's a link down like that. Who are you at the other meeting too?
Um, the, uh, the commissioners meeting.
Rebecca just came from a meeting.
No, I was not at that one.
You need to listen to that one.
Was it city, city hall?
They told her people are tired of having her camera in their face and sitting here.
Oh, I would put a pass.
So, we'll need bacon and famous.
Oh, that was through the development commission, I think. That was.
Show people this is the agenda. About that. We got transfers. My arm's not long enough. We got that. We got all that. New money. And then we got general fund money. Now, just so everybody who's joining in, Jonathan Kulp had all the microphones fixed. That is like great taxpayer money. So we're going to be able to hear everybody tonight. So this is exciting. Bethany, I just want to update you that the clock is still not working outside. So I don't think any more money should be awarded to anybody until that clock is fixed. Just saying. And I want you to know that I saved us lots of money because I just looked at my phone and I knew what time it was instantly. That's right. I saved $30,000 taxpayers.
Good evening. Welcome. Called the main meeting of the Madison County Council meeting to order. And first, I've asked Councilor Gervaski to deliver our credit.
Father, we just thank you for this opportunity, Lord, to meet tonight and conduct the county business. Father, we ask your protection over all the residents of Madison County and all our first responders out there. And, Lord, we just thank you for each one that serves in this county. We thank you, Lord, for those who showed up tonight to take, to be involved in what goes on in our county. And, Lord, we just pray that you would give us discernment and guidance as we make decisions tonight. And we ask, Father, that our conversation would be respectful, meaningful, and productive. And we pray that he would be honored by it all. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Thanks.
You'll join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. What call, please?
Councilor Steele.
Here. Here.
They're working now.
Councilor Layton, here. Councilor Gervaski, here. Councilor Keller.
President.
Vice President North. President Green.
Here. Uh, next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. You all had an opportunity to review the minutes from April 8. Were there any questions, amendments, comments? If not, I would take a motion for approval.
I make a motion to approve.
Councilor Gervaski, is there a second?
Second.
Councilor Keller.
No.
I'm sorry? Oh, sorry, Councilor Layton. I apologize. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passed. Uh, the agenda, uh, we have the agenda in front of us. There is a, ooh, those are really hot. If we can, uh, adjust them at all, try to step back a little bit.
Well, now you're too quiet.
Okay, well, we'll try, we'll try to somewhere be in the middle. Yes, the, uh, the agenda, uh, from central dispatch, Ms. Chambers requested removal of her item. Uh, so that would be an amendment to the agenda. Um, I would take a motion for the approval of the amended agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
Councilor Kulp, is there a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Thank you. Uh, just a couple of comments I would make, reflecting on the last couple of months, we kind of talked about the process by which we would go about, uh, developing a budget this year, creating council liaisons. Uh, I've been really, um, thrilled at the opportunity to go meet myself with some of our leaders. Uh, I know several of you have mentioned that, uh, that has been a meaningful experience. There are a number of questions that have come up, which is good. Uh, we want people thinking early about all of that. And so, uh, just to remind, we'll have an email go out to our department heads, uh, asking for our first draft to leave the auditor's office by the 20th of June. Uh, so again, just something to be in, in, keep in mind with regard to your liaison responsibilities, in case there are any questions or concerns. Uh, I'm gonna try to address some of those, uh, in, in the email. Talking to Councilor Gervaski this last week, a good example, just to, you know, what happens if there are, uh, fund, uh, costs that are rising out of the control of a particular department head? You know, what do we do about that? Uh, there are a number of other issues that, uh, some foreseen, some unforeseen. And so, anyway, we're gonna try to make the best effort we can. I think the more prepared we come into this discussion, uh, hopeful we'll make, be able to be in a position to make the best decision possible. The other thing I wanted to mention, I talked to Mr. Clutter. Uh, Mr. Clutter, one of the things that was, uh, appealing to many of us about Mr. Clutter's office is a willingness to do training for the council. And so, uh, he said they have about an hour, um, presentation to help with, uh, orientation. It'd be particularly helpful, I think, for the, the ones of us that are new, but also for those of you who've been around for a while. And asked him to put that either before or after, I'll, I'll take a, a straw poll of you all, um, here, uh, sometime in the next week or two, to decide whether we want to do that ahead of the meeting or right after the meeting next month. So, just want you to be aware and prepared for that.
Will that be open to the public?
That's, um, all I have to say about that auditor's report. Mr. Kulp.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me in this mic? Wanted to start, give you, uh, just a rundown right before budget season. Uh, this is material provided by the Government Finance Officers Association, which, which I've often talked to you about and encourage you to attend their, um, sessions and things that they have. They're, they're really a dynamic group of finance professionals. But if you think about what a budget is and why it's important, um, a budget's a key policy doc, document. Basically, it's defining what we think is important to our community. What are we gonna spend our taxpayer dollars on? Um, what are we gonna buy with it? Uh, what is our goal? What, what are we gonna do? And, and then the process, how do we decide that? We know that, that revenues are limited, um, and there's a lot of desire to have changes in departments. And it, obviously, it's a difficult process because you have a lot of departments that need, uh, funding and would desire to have more funding than what they get. But we are under limited revenue. So, the document kind of communicates that when it's done, communicates what our spending priorities are on. Um, and it, it's a great thing for the public to be able to see where their money's going. Um, the system is how we implement those decisions, you know, how, um, if you think about what we do in a budget process, we have to communicate. We have to look at different departments, look at their desires, look at what they want to do. And all those decisions come down in the budget process. What's it really mean to have a balanced budget? Generally, it means that revenues equal expenditures. Remember that a budget matches those revenues with expenditures. So we actually start with the revenues and then we back into the expenditures to meet those revenues. Um, if departments do not view the budget as a spending constraint, then the budget will not work or benefit the, the community. And the body responsible for adopting the budget is also responsible for holding departments accountable. I like this definition from GFOA's Power Politics and Budgeting. Says the fundamental purpose of local government budgeting is to find the best way to use collective community resources like taxes to invest in goods and services that benefit the community, including infrastructure, technology, public safety, and health, among many other things. What throws a budget out, out of balance? Uh, if revenues come in less than expected, it throws it out of balance. If expenses are higher than expect, expected, whether due to inflation or uncontrolled spending or increased service demands, uh, those things will, will throw it off as well as lower revenues. Uh, if new priorities emerge during the budget period, if, if you decide that something comes up and you deem it important to do, that can throw your balance out of budget. It's most concerning when the revenue is less than the expenditures. But it's also important to be aware if the opposite is occurring and understand why. If your revenue is greater than expenditures, at some point, if you've reached your, um, reserve rates that you deem necessary to, um, accommodate any emergency situations or recessions or anything like that, and you're still collecting money, then, then you're probably taxing too much at some level. We, we've never been to this particular thing. Um, and frankly, based on legislation that's passed, but I don't think we're gonna be there next, next year, so you probably don't have to worry about it. But, but we, we always need to be concerned, uh, that the revenue equals the expenditures. Some approaches to budget reductions they recommend is emphasize collaboration, trust, and open communication. And then first, look for efficiencies, a different way to achieve an intended outcome. Um, perhaps, you know, if you've got a couple of programs, you can stair-step them over a couple of years. Looking at the budget in terms of programs rather than line items can be helpful. You can do targeted versus across-the-board cuts or temporary versus permanent. There's all kinds of things you can do to approach a budget reduction. And our last one was be careful not to penalize well-managed departments to benefit poorly managed departments. Okay, now we're back to the cash flow spreadsheet. You know I love the cash flow spreadsheet. And this is the general fund. Uh, I wanted to bring some special attention to this spreadsheet this month because in, um, particular, I want to look at this number right here in May. So all the, the white lines are filled out. They're actual numbers now through April. Okay, so at the end of April, we ended with $1,121,000. If you look in May, I put $2 million in the property tax. So, uh, I've sent Dan Gert, our county treasurer, an email telling him that we will need an advance on our property tax distribution in the amount of $2 million. And you see, by putting that in there, when we go down, we'll be May with a, a small positive balance of $167,951. Without that $2 million, you can obviously tell you'd be $1.8 million in the hole. So we'll take that advance, um, and shore up until the distribution in June. If you see I've backed this June number off from 12, 12 million, 690, to 10, 690, put the $2 million over in May. If you follow the cash flow out, uh, we're projecting a year-end balance of $10,492,000. When I look at this sheet, I always want to look at this number right here. This is the year-end number. And then I want to go over here and look at this number, what we came into here with. Technically, if you've got a balanced budget and you're matching your revenues with expenditures, these would be equal. Okay, but you can see you're starting with 11.2 and you're moving down to 10.492. Okay, the thing I want to stress here is we came into the year with 11.2 and we were already gonna be, already gonna be negative already gonna be negative in May. So we probably need to think, as our budgets are increasing, that we also want to see this last number increase. Because if you think about it, this number's gonna travel up to here for next year. And we're gonna start working on our budget. And then we're gonna be negative before that first tax draw, um, when we get it in June. So, I know I beat this cash flow spreadsheet, but I think it's incredibly important to understand why we budget, why revenues are important, and that we budgeted all the expected revenue. I did update this, this sheet up here. So, um, this is as of 4/30. So the additional appropriations this year have been $41,764. The reductions, um, at the end of April was negative 2,325. So your total budget for this year is $45 million. Okay, if you look at the receipts, you're right around $45 million in receipts that are expected. So that's not, that's not bad. But, uh, I always take a historical view of spending, um, rather than the budget. Okay, and if you look at this, uh, we're, we're looking at $46.7 million of spending if we look at it historically. But that, that right there is what drives this cash balance down at the end of the year. If you maintain your budget, then you're gonna be fine. You, you're, you'll be closer to this $45 million and you could actually exit the year with the same amount that you came in with. So it's all about what you do in additional appropriations. You've budgeted all your expected revenues and any appropriations beyond that are gonna drive down that cash balance. I think that's all I have for this evening's, um, auditor's report. Are there any, any questions that I can help you with?
Next is old business. Uh, really the only issue I just wanted to bring back up, uh, was a topic from, uh, last month that has been in the process of conversation. That is the, uh, interest income from investment. Uh, there's some, there was some discrepancy between, uh, understanding the statute, uh, from, from the legislature about management of this resource. Uh, the, there, there was one interpretation, uh, by our finance board made up of commissioners and treasurer, that this, uh, the state board of accounts had allocated responsibility of the use of interest income from investment to the finance board. Um, and there were some of us who read the statute and said, well, it looks like the council would be the fiscal body to take on that responsibility. We asked attorney Mr. Clutter to connect with, uh, Mr. Graham, uh, and seek out a, an opinion from the state board of accounts, which, uh, for those of you who are not aware, is not a legal entity as much as an auditing entity. Uh, and gave us an opinion that, that from their perspective, uh, they interpret it as being the responsibility of the finance board. Uh, and so what I've asked is Mr. Clutter to give kind of a summary, just to kind of bring us up to speed where, where his interpretation is for us and then what options exist for us if we continue to hold different views. Yeah, if you come to the mic, if you can manage whatever feedback might exist there.
I'll try to stand back a little bit. Um, yes, so Mr. Graham and I had divergent interpretations of the statute. And, um, I think as I mentioned last, last meeting, the primary difference being is what is an investment authority? The statute speaks to the investment authority as the responsibility of those funds. My interpretation is that that is the county, the county as a whole is the investment authority. There are obviously taxpayer dollars and other funds that are, are public funds. And, um, Mr. Graham's interpretation was the investment authority is the board of finance, which is comprised of the three commissioners and the county treasurer. Uh, I believe Mr. Gardner originally reached out to the state board of accounts. It's my understanding that during one of their commissioners' son and hards, that they had been told that the state board of accounts may be receptive to the board of finance. And they have apparently taken the position that that is their audit position, that the board of finance is the investment authority. And as such, uh, they have control over those interest funds. They would default to go into the general fund. The statute says into the general fund or such other fund as the investment authority allocates them to. And in this case, they adopted that ordinance figure all of it up and those are now going into the capital improvement fund. That being said, as Dr. Green mentioned, the state board of accounts is not a legal entity, so it's not a legal entity, but it does carry obviously some weight. That's their official audit position for all counties in the state. Uh, the options at this point are, I mean, if you wanted to draw a line in the sand, we would basically have to go to court to file a declaratory judgment action to get a different legal interpretation. I don't think that that would be a wise use of your resources. Uh, it's, any, any legal action is expensive. And here you've got attorneys, whether it's me or someone else, representing the council and life-laid a county attorney, Mr. Graham, representing the commissioners and duking it out over in court. Um, and that, that's always an expensive proposition and you never know how it's gonna go. Uh, your view might be victorious. The commissioner's view may be victorious. But in either respect, it's, it's an expensive and time-consuming process. Um, so I don't particularly recommend that course of action. I'll, of course, refer your wishes, but I don't think that's advisable. Particularly since the state board of accounts has taken that position. Again, that's not a legal interpretation, but the court would certainly give it some deference.
Do we have a position in writing?
Yes. There's an email from Ricky, or remember last name.
Just an opinion.
Any other questions?
Did you say there were other options other than declaratory judgment?
Well, I think, I think there's always the option of negotiations, um, with the, between the council and the commissioners. Rather than them taking all of the interest income, perhaps they would be comfortable with taking a percentage of it. Obviously, it varies month to month depending upon the interest rate you're receiving.
No.
Obviously, the county council has used in the vast those funds for other expenses that come up, whether it were additional appropriations or other things. And, um, I, I think that would be advisable. I spoke with Mr. Graham about that and he thought the commissioners may be receptive to some type of, uh, of informal agreement, whether it begins with a percentage or a flat fee, a flat monthly amount. I think a percentage makes more sense, again, because of the varying rates, amounts that you're gonna be receiving. But I think that's certainly a lot cheaper than a declaratory judgment. And I, I think it would be beneficial to both sides.
And we still hold the power of whether or not to be appropriated, correct? So that they don't have to ask for permission to spend the money? So like they can go with the allow, they can just say if we don't appropriate it.
Yes, yes, you do. Yeah. I, I thought you meant as a general.
So you still have the same how it is?
Sorry.
Yeah, I think, uh, uh, I think that's a really important, um, clarification. You know, this is one of those, you know, for the public who's trying to figure out what's going on. Um, this is a, in my mind, a really good problem to have. Uh, our, our leaders, financial leaders have invested money wisely and we have a significant amount of interest income that, that we wouldn't have had had they not invested it wisely. And so I want to, I want to express the gratitude to our treasurer and to, to the folks who are, were directing those investments because that there are, there are gonna be millions of dollars that we're gonna be able to utilize toward what capital improvement or whatever else it is, uh, because of the wise choice of, of, uh, using those resources. So, uh, in that regard, I consider it a, a good problem. I think as far as working it out, it is a, a designated fund. Uh, so in, in that sense, no money can be spent except that we authorize its appropriation. Uh, on the other hand, it can only be appropriated for this particular purpose if it's in a designated fund.
Yes.
If that makes sense.
Yeah.
Correct.
And I, and I apologize. I thought you were talking about from the general fund. So it will, it will go into this capital improvement fund.
Any other questions or comments? Thanks for sharing.
So, President Green, so would this be where we would make a decision on what to do going forward on this? If we would like to continue to have a discussion on how that money is?
Absolutely. If you, if you feel like you want to embrace either, um, I mean, the options are essentially go to court to get an opinion or to, uh, pursue a negotiation with the commissioners to see about a percentage. Uh, you know, we can, we can make that decision.
So could I make a motion then that we would proceed with negotiations on that?
Certainly. There's a motion on the floor to proceed the negotiations with the commissioners. Is there a second?
I second. Is this something that we can do? Is this motion for today or is this in the future?
No, this, this, we won't be negotiating today. Uh, but this would be at some point here in the future.
Jonathan, is your mic on?
So there's a, there's a, a second?
I second.
Yeah, if you've got a mic.
You know, avoiding feedback.
Uh, is there any, uh, any other discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose. That motion carries. We will continue negotiations and we'll pursue the, the mechanism of that going forward. Okay, thank you. Okay, new business. Out-of-state travel. Are we recorded? Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. Um, I am here tonight to ask for approval for the out-of-state travel request. Um, it will be, I will be going to our PRIA, our annual PRIA conference. For those of you who don't know what PRIA is, that is Property Records Industry Association. It is our leading resource for land records. Um, Property Reporting Industry Association is a national association that brings elected officials and business partners together so that we may stay current on technology, business solutions, legislation, and other states. Um, excuse me for my allergies. Um, I look forward to, I'll be networking, learning best practices, and continuing education with other reporters. Um, I do get, I would get nine credit hours for this trip, um, going towards continuing education. So, um, and this would be my first one. So I'm really looking forward to be able to bring stuff back to Madison County. So I'm really looking forward to be able to bring stuff back to Madison County. Anyone further question?
Questions? Take a motion. Make a motion to approve. Counselor Holt, is there a second? Counselor Gorbowski, any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you. State Conference.
Thank you.
Next, our transfers. As I mentioned earlier, Ms. Chambers from Central Dispatch has removed her, so we go next to the sheriff.
Hello, counsel. This is Alba Sherf Grant for, over time for seatbelt enforcement, DUI enforcement. So the money's there, just moving to the pay line to pay that out.
Any questions? Take a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Counselor Gorbowski, is there a second? Second. Counselor Holt, any other discussion or question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Prosecutor's Office.
Hello, Heather McLean, Madison County Prosecutor's Office. We are coming tonight for a transfer request on behalf of our Adult Protective Services Office. We have, I think this was before you guys last month as well, regarding insurance line for one of our employees. She transferred out of an office that had insurance to the Adult Protective Services where there was no money funded for insurance because everybody in there has insurance through their retirement departments. So we're trying to continue funding that line. And I think that'll do it because as of June 30th, APS will no longer be existing in Madison County. Well, with any of the prosecutor's offices in the state of Indiana. It's been privatized and we lost the contract. So that office will dissolve.
Any questions? Take a motion for approval?
Make a motion.
Counselor Gorbowski, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Lichten, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed.
Thank you.
Juvenile probation.
Tracy Lane, juvenile probation. We are going through our JDAI grant. The grant cycle ends June 30th, so we're looking at our, what we funded through that and what we're needing the money for that's left over to get that spent before the end of the grant cycle. We have $3,000 in personnel that we have not been able to use. And so we'd like to move that to another services, which would be specifically for a mentoring program and some data services.
Any questions? Take a motion for approval?
So moved.
Counselor Keller, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Lichten, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners.
Good evening, counsel. Here this afternoon to request a transfer within the Capital Asset Improvement Fund from the $36,000 line into $23,000 and $37,000. So there's a $5,000 transfer coming out of $36,000 or a request for transfer out into repair and supplies. That repair and supplies, $1,500 of that is electrical equipment for the bell tower. Rather than go out and contracting electric and do that, we're doing that in-house, but the supplies for that was like $1,492 and change, if I remember right. Also, about $500 would be paint supplies. And that would be paint, paint supplies related to the youth center. If you look at the detention part of the youth center, well, more than one building out there actually. But if you look up into the roof structure, there's, in the construction industry, they might call them eyebrow vents. But those are painted vents, which are white and they, they are in need of paint. So the paint supplies, that difference, that difference of the $2,000, the, the remaining $500 would go toward paint and supplies for those buildings, for those items. And then the $37,000 rental is the rental for the lift, the two man lift for, we were required in our, our contract to redo the bell tower to provide the lift. So we'll be leasing a lift that's in the, I don't know the exact amount, $21,000, $2200, depending on if you keep it more days or not. And of course, so we, we asked for a transfer of $3,000 for that. But the, what we're doing with that is the bell tower would be taken care of in part of that week. And then it's gonna be moved to the youth center and we're gonna do the painting on those buildings where we can use that lift in both places. So whether we get it back in time for it to be the $22, $2300 or by the day, it's $400 probably. So it depends on how long those two projects take. So request for $5,000 from the $36,000 into the $23,000 and $37,000.
Any questions?
I have a question. It just, because the rental part confused me on that. So I appreciate that explanation on that. It just, so I went back and I was looking over the ordinance that was passed to create this fund. It says that they'll be utilized specifically by Madison County Commissioners for capital assets and improvement that's prescribed by state law. So is there, is there something that specifies by state law what these types of funds can be spent on?
Well, if you were in a bidding process, there is. These items so far are coming in, well, I'll take that back. Some of the painting, we're going for a third bid at the paint, for the painting of the chapel. One bid was under the threshold, one bid was over the threshold. So state law would provide that we take bids on those. If it's under the $50,000 threshold, we would just contract with the company to do that. So that would be one example of what we're talking about. If we get another bid in that's under that threshold, then we would be required to go to a third bidder.
So I was just curious, because you know, looking through the rainy day fund from the working budget last year to this budget that was passed for 2025, there was a line item added between, from that working budget to when the budget was approved. And there's a capital projects line in that rainy day fund. Is that for something different than what this fund is for? It's a location 0068. Under the rainy day fund, there's a line item there that says capital projects, $1.1 million.
I don't know what that's for. I can check for you. Be happy to check for you.
Okay, I appreciate.
Within the rainy day fund?
Yeah, yeah. It's another line that was added at some point. I just didn't know because it's really close to the same amount that what we started within the.
Well, the auditor might know. I don't know.
Who were the auditor? Yeah. That's promising. The truth is always nice.
Yes.
I'm sorry, are there other questions?
I have, I have a question. So a couple commissioners we need to go, maintenance stood in your meeting and said that they had enough money in their budget to pay for the bell. And so I wanna know why we're now transferring money for the bell when maintenance has already pledged to you that they could pay for it without asking for the council's approval?
Because we'd like to pay for that bell out of the capital asset fund, which is where I think it should be paid from. I'm sorry.
I think that's inappropriate when maintenance has already pledged money for it.
Well, the, the maintenance wouldn't pledge the money for anything. They would ask permission to spend that money on that.
No, they pledged.
We decided we want to pay for it out of the capital asset fund.
But they did pledge.
But they said they could do, they had enough money in their budget to not have to come to the council and ask for it. So if they have so much money in their budget, are ready to pay for the bell and it's maintenance and the bell is part of the courthouse and that's maintenance, then why are we spending it out of this capital asset improvement fund?
Yep.
I'm not sure what you're actually wanting, except for you want to pay it out of one fund with that instead of the other. We are requiring that it gets paid out of the capital asset fund. They, they do have money in their budget at the first of the year, but I don't mean they're gonna have it in, in September, October.
You think you're requiring it? Did you just say you're requiring it? I didn't, did I mishear you?
I don't know what you're talking about.
Did you just say that the commissioners are requiring it to be paid out of the capital improvement fund?
Oh, is it, yes, we want to pay it out of the capital improvement fund.
But you're requiring it? Is that what you said? Did I mishear?
No.
We got it on video. Excuse me. This, this conversation is between Mr. Gardner and the council. This isn't appropriate to have comment from the public right now. There's a time for public comment. So I'm gonna ask you to be, so I'm gonna ask you to be quiet so that we can actually have our conversation. I, I appreciate that respect. Thank you. Now, excuse me.
Yes, we do want it paid for out of the capital improvement fund. That's the intent of the fund.
That's the request present.
And that's the request we're talking about right now.
So, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Counselor Lichten, is there a second? All seconds. Counselor Steele, is there other discussion or questions?
So how does the council want this paid? Because we know the maintenance department has an over-ableated budget and they have enough money in it.
Well, there's, there's a motion, Counselor Keller, to pay, to approve the transfer of, from the capital improvement fund to these.
We're gonna have a discussion about that now.
Yes.
And so we're now appropriating money to be spent on the bell. Do we want that bell, that money for the bell to come out of this, with this transfer? Or do we want maintenance to pay for it? Since they've already stated to the commissioners that they have the money in their budget and that they don't have to come to us for permission because they already have the money in their, in their budget. So which way do we wanna do it?
I, I think that is, we have known. A known improvement to our properties. It's, and we have the monies there. We free up the general fund money because there's no guarantee that they won't need that. We've got nine years with, and if they don't spend the money through the end of the year, it just goes back to the general fund. So that's a way of preserving our general fund.
No.
Is there a way to preserve the general fund, whether they knock fiber this money out of the general fund? But I, but that doesn't work. Instead of fix it, I don't really see that as a capital improvement. I see that as maintenance. That's a repair.
No, it's getting replaced. The equipment is getting replaced. It is a capital improvement. It would be something you depreciate over a period of years. It's a capital improvement. It's not a maintenance issue. It's not replacing a broken water heater or a heating element in a water heater. It is replacing the whole system.
No.
Other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Roll call, please.
Roll call.
Counselor Steele?
Yes.
Counselor Holt?
Yes.
Counselor Lichten?
Yes.
Counselor Keller?
No.
Counselor Gorbowski?
No.
President Green?
Yes. Thank you, thank you. Next is new money. Juvenile probation.
Hello again. This is not actually new money. Thank you. We had a grant through the Criminal Justice Institute that was supposed to run January 1st of '24 to December 31st. We did not receive those funds until June. So we were six months in. And so we were approved for an extension to be able to use those funds through June of this year. It was my, being uneducated about that grant process and the budget process, I did not ask for a, basically a reappropriation at the beginning of the year and assumed that because we had that amendment, that it would have carried. And so this is the same money that was left at the end of the year that we have until June of this year to spend that was taken out, that needs to be put back in.
Okay. Any questions? Take a motion?
So moved.
Counselor Keller?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Counselor Gorbowski? Thanks for helping with my hearing. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed.
Thank you.
Next is our clerk. We, this is a, a little bit, there's an amendment to this. And maybe have you explain that? Wanted to make sure counsel had an opportunity to look at an email that was sent out late about that. I think it was the same total amount, but just some variation in what lines they go to. Could you share that?
So the HOMID grant, we were awarded in the election office, a grant for $187,861. And with that, we will be doing three, three different things. One of those is we'll be getting new poll pads. And that's already gone through the process. The county election board voted unanimously on our vendor. Then we're going to replace the batteries, the backup batteries on the voting equipment and then the coin cell batteries. So the difference between those, the coin cell battery is the battery that goes into the equipment that keeps the time and the date. And then the main battery is the backup in case there is a, a power outage or something like that on election day, so when they're used. And then the third thing is to enhance our webpage for elections. And I think that's for $2,500. So the correction, and I think I made one for all of you if you wanna take one and pass it down. The, the point that I turned into you, the appropriations were for $390 other services and then for the fourth floor machinery repair, or machinery and equipment. So the way I changed that, I took the, the battery replacement out of other services and put it into repair and maintenance because in the original contract of the voting equipment, this is a part of their maintenance for them. So it should be in $360. And then for $390, we have a $200 or $2,500 for the enhancement for the webpage for elections. And $440 is for the 76E poll pads that we'll be getting. So I just need that money appropriated in the proper fund, which is the grant fund. And I think that is fund number 8232. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Questions? Take, take a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Counselor Gorbowski, is there a second? Second. Counselor Holt, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed.
Thank you.
Of course. Evening, counsel. I'm not in space. Craig Chandler, magistrate with the Circuit Courts. Judicial officer oversees family recovery court, family recovery court, a problem solving court, like drug court, mental health court. Apply that model to cases where children have been removed from their parents due to substance abuse reasons. So we kind of apply that same model. We started beginning of last year, 2024, with grant funds from the Indiana Office of Court Services, a division of the Supreme Court. We received grants from, for last year, grants again for this year. The money that we were given last year, we didn't need at all. We were able to use less than they gave us. So we had to give it back and then ask for that money to roll over for this year. We only ended up needing to ask for about half of what we had to give back. That's what this is, took this long end of the year for the Office of Court Services to approve that rollover. Now we're requesting its appropriation. We have FRC coordinator, Nat Lehman here and myself. Between the two of us, I'm sure we can answer any questions that you have. Very quickly, I do wanna tell you that we were provisionally certified last fall. We just went through the full certification process a few weeks ago and expect to be fully certified very, very shortly. And we have our first four participants graduating program released tomorrow.
Any questions, comments? Take a motion?
I make a motion.
Counselor Lichten, second. Counselor Holt? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Thanks for your service. Big congratulations.
Thank you.
Hello, counsel. This is our firearms, that's one of our, one of our special funds on our.
This is our firearms, that's one of our, one of our special funds on our firearms line. We're moving it over to the 39,000 line. So it's a, they call it new money, but it's more of a transfer if it's good for you to decide.
Any discussion or comment? Want to take a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Counselor Grabowski, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Lichten? Any other discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you, chair. Will you stay right there? That would be great.
This is the one we've been waiting for.
Next, we come to the public hearing items and sheriff request for the general fund.
Yes. We, you know, these are the other services and charges and operating supply lines. And like I've notified the council, you know, we were converting to new uniforms that last were updated in 2015, 2016 timeframe. That was the ballpark expenditures out of these lines. So operating expenses, I believe, especially that. But, and I know there's some concerns about the amount. You know, clearly we can reduce that down to what the council, the council's comfortable with and see how the year goes. We may have other lines that we may be able to transfer in as we go along through the year.
Questions? Comments?
Well, I was just doing a little bit of, sorry that scared you. I spoke loud. Just doing a little bit of number crunching. And it looks like some of this is, we shorted those a little bit in the budget for the one line item, the 39,000 line item in the budget. We shorted it from what was requested by 15,000. And then in the 24,000 line item, we, we had shorted it from what was requested, about 23,000. And then just looking at some of the expenses that were paid from '24 with the '25 fiscal year funds, I think is kind of between those two things is what's put, put us in this situation. So I don't know, just bringing those numbers to light and.
Now, these two funds are historically in my three budget processes are the ones that are cut right off the bat. So I mean, it's, it's the nature of the beast of as we go through the budget process of reducing lines here and pushing them up on the other side. I know that's not, it's hard, let me say, it's not a true budget, but we know what it takes to operate these lines on a normal year. Uniforms and vests were expenditure that increased that this year. As you can see, going back to the documentation that provided in '22, and then what we usually expenditures on those lines, the historical, you know, the actual numbers.
Are those, are those kind of reductions that occur over the course of time staggered?
Yes, yes.
There's so many per year kind of thing?
Right.
It shouldn't be that unpredictable?
Well, if it's unpredictable, we, we started planning and seeking bids on those vests and uniforms last year. So, but I guess if I went to the council and said I wanted another $40,000, $50,000, I guess I'm going to shut that.
Well, I think one, I apologize for that. Yeah, it was loud. But to kind of piggyback off what Counselor Grabowski said, that was reduced. But it was reduced for a reason because we are under a budget constraint. So there are obviously things that, that are needed. But I think my opinion would be you may have some room to transfer and then hopefully be able to manage things with that reduction. Again, the reason it was reduced is it wasn't ever understood, okay, we're going to cut this and then we're going to be able to supplement this mid-year. And the reason we cut it in the beginning is that we didn't have the revenue. And we still don't have the revenue for this. So I guess I would ask, and obviously you know a lot more about your different line items, but would machinery and equipment be a possibility? Or could you take some more out of the commissary to do that? We were glad to get those three balances, but perhaps a more detailed inventory of a commissary would help us maybe to help other departments manage that a little bit differently. Could there be tweaks in other line items like comp time for overtime and use different ideas? Work with the auditor, maybe to try to help reduce other lines to where you could, that would just be my, my suggestion. Because we are, as we heard initially, on a major budget constraint. And we need to be responsible. That is our job. You know, it'd be great if we could, I'm going to say, it'd be great if we could go back and get the money tree and bring it out here and just start bidding it out. I mean, that would be amazing, but we can't. And that's just my opinion. And we were, we were given a great presentation. And I'd like to abide by that and, and find a different avenue if we could. That, that's not your opinion. You just read a hot cold email. But this is not a mismanagement issue with the sheriff's department. This is a, we traditionally underfund the sheriff's department at budget time. And they have a very large budget. And so we go through and we reduce it down and they do the best that they can to work with it. But every year, and this happened before Sheriff Eamon was in office, the sheriff's department has to come back and ask for more money because we don't properly fund them to begin with. And so we, we make cuts so that our overall budget is balanced, but it's not enough for, for, it's not a true budget for the sheriff's department. And that's our fault. And so when you look through Sheriff Eamon's expenses for this year and these funds, he sent the ledger to the council. And so when you look through those things, I saw things like cameras for the jail, new bulletproof vests for our officers because they expire after five years. And vet bills for our K-9 officer. And so I don't know, you know, from those expenses, what I saw, which one of those you would have preferred that he not spend money on. And I think if you went out and asked, you know, the citizens, the taxpayers, which one of those things they wouldn't want us to fund, I don't know what they would pick either because I feel like he's been very responsible with the money. So I understand that we have a balanced budget and we, we need office holders to manage money well and work within their budgets, but it's really not fair in this situation. And I don't know where the money's going to come from, but we have to fund the sheriff's department. These are really important public safety issues. And a lot of us ran campaigns saying that we supported law enforcement and then we get up here and have to debate on if we're going to get adequate funding in the sheriff's department.
With all due respect, I did read the email, as every other council member has. However, I do have a free-thinking mind and have made my own opinion and frankly do not appreciate the disrespect.
You made sure the same opinion and I'm sorry.
That is fine. We may differ on opinions, but just because council members differ on opinions does not make one any less than the other. Those were my suggestions. I respect you greatly and your department. This is a very difficult job. No disrespect was meant.
None taken. I understand the, the constraints that the council asks to look at. And in us and dispatch, our different departments than every other department in the county because we are 24 hours, seven days a week, every holiday, everything goes. So we have far more moving parts than most departments. And we know where, you can look at the history of our spend expenditures over every budget. Where it's going to fall out most years for the expenditures, whether it's overtime or there's other supplies, the 24,000 or the 39,000 line. We know where those are going to come in at. And, and we do have a big budget. That's we get reduced down to make it all fit come budget time. And we do what we can. And we, and the commissary is a supplemental fund. That is not a fund to be utilized. We, like I said, I extended out to you. We expended $34,000 or $36,000 on that line for, in March alone for uniforms. So it's, we, we use it when we can for plethora of things that, you know, across the whole department that we don't have to take out the general fund. To, to about $100,000 a month.
Chair, are there any line items that could be reduced that you know you're not going to spend?
Well.
Unfilled positions that have gone. I know sometimes it's, it's very minimal or you may have to.
Right.
The many line.
The machinery line that was mentioned by Counselor Lichten, we, we have to replace cars. I mean, that's the, you have patrol that's out there in cars. So that's, that's what they're using on the jail side machinery line. All, all of our vans are 17 or older, 2017, our transport vans that go up and down the highways every day to institutions. So we're looking to buy one van this year out of that money. So that will reduce that greatly, but we'll see where we are later months. That's why I said if we reduce it down to where we're comfortable, the council's comfortable in these two lines. And we're going to readdress this a few months down the road. See where everything's at, if it takes a transfer out of another line.
That's why I wondered if we can get closer.
Right. It's going to be made right now, so.
Through the end of the year, but there is a lot of uncertainty in those lines.
Yeah, exactly. Yes.
And I know at budget time, it was, hey, let's see what we can do if we can keep it. If not, we'll address it when it comes up.
Well, I just wanted to give a little bit of information that I've discovered. Also, I think we can agree that maybe we need to do a little bit better communication at budget time of things, expenses that will be coming up as far as like body armor and things like that. But when I was doing a little bit of research on the capital improvement fund and what the state says that that can be spent on, one of the items on there, and this is Indiana Code 36916-2, it actually has a line in there that says that this fund can be used to purchase body armor for active members of a police department. So maybe we could consider funding some of this out of the capital improvement fund as well since it specifically has that in Indiana Code.
Yeah, we even looked at grants, but we're too big of a department to get grants from DOJ to, because while small departments can get grants for a body armor replacement, but we're too large in the department for that. I was not aware of the statute.
I wasn't either. I was surprised to see that.
Chair, do you have a, do you have a number of how, how much specifically was spent on the body armor?
Well, they're tolling that up because they're going through April now, closing out April across our, our books and things. So I will have the exact number, I think. To date, like out of the commissary, I think it's over $60,000 of that, out of that line from January to this point to people.
Just for the body armor?
Well, officers, yeah, that'd be uniforms and body armor. The, the, the body armor loan for the, the 10 or 14, 24 officers that need the vests were, was the vest alone were nearly $50,000.
Yeah, it, your email said the vest replacement alone is the bulk of the expenditures at approximately $47,000. So is there a way that we could adjust what he's asking for now? And then have a new money request for next month for $47,000 for that capital improvement, uh, that capital improvement fund?
We can even push it back. I mean, if you, like 20,000 each line or something like that now to get us to our invoices and then see where that goes and like Counselor Steele suggested, see where we're at. We can do some transfers out of the lines if we have an over, over genie of those or take a look at them and just reevaluate or, you know, try to look at that, the capital improvement.
Take a transfer today, you mean? Is that what you're thinking?
I don't have a transfer. I don't have anything to transfer out of today. It'd be a new money request today. So reduce my, my request down to where the council's.
You, you mentioned invoices. Has, has there been orders made that you don't have the money?
No, 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 no. They're, we're, yeah. No, no, that's not the case. They're closing out, you know, the line.
Is there, is there, is there a request in the next month that is needed on an emergency basis to, to be able to purchase that you don't have the resources to purchase?
Let's see, I should look up those lines.
Because clearly we need, you know.
Well, that's like in the 24,000, I'm sitting $75 in that line and the 39,000, I'm at $2,085. So whatever, like a vet bill comes in at $800, I don't have anything in that line to pay it with. So that's why I said we can reduce it down to an amount that the, the council's more comfortable instead of $40,000 for a new money request. And I certainly agree with that.
I think the, I think the main problem is I don't think anybody's comfortable right now taking new money out of the general fund at all. We all saw the spreadsheet. Obviously, we, all of us know we got to keep the sheriff's department going. None of us, not a single one of us, looked at that list you sent us and picked apart things that you don't need. Okay? I think the hard part for us is that I don't believe, I'm not going to speak for it, but I don't believe anybody's comfortable right now pulling new money out of the general fund. So I think that the best goal for us to try to say, you know, let's find something, even if it's a temporary, we may have to do a couple of transfers throughout the year. A transfer now out of a line item that you already have to get you going for something now. But we may have to do some later transfers down the road. I don't know. I know you have $393,825 in your commissary fund. I understand that you have other things that come out of that. Is that something that you could pull 20,000 from each line now? In the future, we can look at making different transfers. And then hopefully in this 2026 new budget cycle, we can try and amend these discrepancies in your budget.
But that's not what the commissary is for, is to fund a general fund item. It's the supplement to the general fund. And that, now you're wanting me to take some commissary monies and to pay bills that are coming in as part of the day-to-day operations of the sheriff's department?
I can just tell you that right now there is money available there. We can work on that later. Right now, there's no money in the general fund that we have left to allocate or to appropriate.
Is that a different relation? No, I'm sorry.
So we can revisit this next month? Is there a minimum or an amount that you need? Because I, I don't think you're prepared to look at ten line items to, to do. You haven't done that in advance. And I like the idea that if we can reimburse the money spent out of the general fund for the vest, we can do that out of capital improvements. That would greatly help us and look for creative ways of thinking. Counselor Grabowski? I don't know how much you need to get by. Eighty thousand a year, is it?
What, and then you, I don't know what that magic number is. I will say 5,000 on each line or something to get us to a month or something. We'd have a better idea to where we're going to be.
Yeah, you're halfway through the year and you have an idea. And you can have, can go through and maybe identify some transfers you know you're not going to need going forward.
You should, we'll take our data, of course.
Offset some of it. I think that's powerful and, and see where we're at.
I agree.
I think we do, we're, we're clearly going to need to be creative here. I, I think what our auditor showed us in the beginning is we have a, we have revenue and we have an expense. And you're asking us to spend more than we have the revenue for. So we, we don't have the revenue for those things unless they come from somewhere else.
I, I'm just worried about the sheriff's department.
Of course.
You know, that's.
That's your response, that's your response. We wouldn't request, we wouldn't ask you to be responsible.
So, yeah, so whatever. All the departments contribute to that revenue issue or expenditure issue, not just the sheriff's department, so.
But again, part of the issue is there's a budget. And we have to, those budgeted dollars are there because that's the revenue that we have.
Right.
And so, you know, if, if we give $80,000 more here, then we have to ask which department are we going to pull $80,000 from? And, and so I think those are, and those are, I mean, that's, that's what we signed for. I mean, that's our responsibility. But we are also wanting to be responsible with the use of the dollars. And I, I think it is a false dichotomy to think that there is, that you either can spend as much money as you feel like you need to spend or we don't support law enforcement. That, that's not an appropriate, fair, or reasonable statement. The fact of the matter is, I think all of us have a great deal of respect and support here. We may come to disagree about how the utilization of resources, but I, I think what Counselor Cole said is right. And that is that there is, and, and speaking to Counselor Keller's comment earlier, there, none of us are going to suggest that you don't take your K-9 to the vet when they need it or, or have bulletproof vests for your officers. I, I think we just have to figure out how to manage the resources. And I think the. And I think the other comment I would make on Counselor Culp's comments is, is we need an accounting of the commissary. I'd like to see an accounting of that fund. It did concern me that that's not, that's not a fund that is audited.
Because it's not general fund money, it's not public money.
Well, but it's, it's money that comes to the sheriff's department. And there's no accounting mechanism for it.
Well, yeah, we get ordered by the state Department of Accounts.
We need, we're the fiscal body. And if it's a supplemental fund, we should be aware of what's happening with that fund. It may not be ours to choose how to spend it.
Right.
But it seems like we're responsible for the utilization of being aware of how we're spending.
Well, there's various departments that have those perpetual funds and other funds across the county that has special funds.
Todd, can you explain? This is a little different than a supplemental.
Real quick, I do just want to say that I was talking to John. He said that he would work on getting that to me. It's not as easy as one, two, three, but he did say, I mean, we were talking about that today. So I do want to just put that out there, that John and I were talking, he's going to work on that.
It's in a binder upstairs, but it's, it's a thick binder because when you're spending a hundred thousand a month, there's a lot of bills that, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it's a lot of money coming and going. And I think to some extent, we just want to make sure we're being responsible, so.
I just had a couple more comments.
Oh, sorry.
No, you're fine. So there are those, I don't know, the miscellaneous funds, discretionary funds, whatever. In general, we don't look at those. We're told we're not, we're only supposed to be concerned with the general fund. So at least that's what I've experienced. And so that's why we didn't, even in the rainy day fund, didn't know that that 1.1 million was designated as a separate line item because we didn't, it's my understanding. I can't say we, I was on the council at the time, but didn't look at that. And then if we're in a position to where we can't fund, like we don't want to fund anything additional here that he's asking for, like if we're in that position where we can't do anything, then we have to look at that interest that was transferred out that kind of put us in a situation like that. So I would make a motion to, to fund these new money requests with the 5,000 that Sheriff Beaman has asked for for these two lines, if you think that would get you through.
At least next month, we can better evaluate where we are in these other lines and potential transfers. Like I said, I think we're done as far as the invoices for the uniforms and the vests at this point. Yeah, they're resolved in the first four months.
We'll get to our public commenters in just a moment. There's a motion on the table, though, for $5,000 in each fund. Is that what you're, I want to make sure I'm understanding. Is there a second? Counselor Steele.
Captain.
What we'll do is we'll have an update for our public comment.
I've been at this podium way too many times, understanding where Beaman's at. We need to understand what needs are, we need to understand what wants are. We've lost an officer up in Elwood. We need to do better. Now, you sat here and listened to Ms. Keller tell everybody that Maintenance testified that they had the money and they did not need the money to fix that clock. They didn't need your approval. To me, that's kind of a slap in the face to the council. So since they don't need it, maybe you should take that 32,000 from Maintenance and give it to Sheriff Beaman. Now you're only $8,000 short. These men have got to be protected out on that road. This, and what floors me even more is Jonathan Culp said, let's give the commissioners $500,000 to get them through. Well, we need to get them through, but they have over $200,000 in that line item. The sheriff has come up here and he has said he only has pennies left in them. And you gave the $500,000 to the commissioners to help them in that $200,000 line item. Then the commissioners come back today, they're not asking you to move money or to spend this or to do that. No, because you've given them $700,000. But yet you're telling our officers that they cannot have money that they truly need? Okay, the clock is a want. It certainly isn't a need. There is anybody in this room that needs that clock to be fixed? But I can tell you what, everyone in this room needs that sheriff to show up. Every one of us. So for you guys to look at him and say, we'll give you $5,000, you need to be looking at him saying, hey, what can we do better? You have over, I don't know how much, half a million dollars in interest money. That money should be going to what you're slashing his budget by. You're never asking the coroner's office what we need our money for. You're just deciding what we're going to have our money for. Same thing you're doing for these officers. And you know what? The comment of you talking into your breath, Ms. Lykens, is just about as disrespectful as you just tried to say to Ms. Keller. So if you want to be respectful, you listen to the people who are up here to speak during public comment. You don't sit up there and talk into your breath. So the person who needs the money is him. There needs to be a roll call in here. This is, this is ridiculous that he's even had to stand up here for this long and ask for what he needs when you've got $500,000 in interest money. And you are letting the commissioners fix a roof, fix a building, do painting on a historical building that they don't even have any idea what they're going to do with it yet. They just testified on that in their last commissioners. Well, we don't know what we're going to do with the building, but yeah, we're going to fix it. You want to talk about he should know what he needs? He has no idea what his prime rate's going to be? He has no idea what Huppman's going to break out there? He has no idea. You want him to plan? Well, what about your commissioners? Why weren't they planning for that clock? Why weren't they planning for those roofs? Why weren't they planning? Where is the audit on the commissioners? Where is it? And you want to audit the sheriff? You all have priorities really screwed up, and from now on, everything needs to be roll called so us voters know exactly how you feel about your calls. Because clearly tonight, you worry more about these commissioners than you worry about our public safety officers. Get some priority, get it together. Next.
Let me get my distance here so I don't blast anyone out. My name is David Sargent. I live at 609 I.A. About the sheriff's request, I've been watching closely how the sheriff's department's being run compared to the other departments. I know that Councilman Steele has been a sworn officer for many years, so he knows what that Batman utility belt does to your back over length of time. Also, in courthouse security, they've just got the new load-bearing vest. I'm sure that's part of the money that the sheriff has spent for his officers. That is needed. That can reduce officer injuries. Bad problems on this. You don't want an officer to go without, with an expired vest, especially with what's happened up in Elwood. Their threat state base are a lot more, so they have to have that equipment replaced on time. So I would ask that you use your wisdom and knowledge, Ron Steele's experience, you, Dr. Green, you know how injuries are with weight and everything, to properly fund the sheriff, to give the deputies what they need to do to do their job safely and reduce the chance of injury so they can finish their career without going out on disability. So thank you very much for your time.
Next.
Cheryl McKenny. When you guys took your vote, it was only Bethany and Christie who voted no to giving the commissioners more money. Yet last month, as was stated earlier, you gave him half a million dollars and you can't give him $40,000 to protect our officers. I want those guys to be alive when they come to my house. I live in this county. I depend on he and his men to come to my house and women. He's got some money. I depend on these people. I don't want them to be afraid to get out because there's some maniac out there with a gun. And if they don't have current updated vest, I don't want them out either. But we need them to protect us and help. Dare you give my money to the commissioners who stated in the meeting that they had the money they needed to fix a bell tower? That you tell me when's the last time anybody looked up to see what time it was? We all have watches and we have phones, and that's how we tell what time it is. That clock doesn't need to be working. They've been doing the $600 repairs year after year to keep it, whatever, maintenance to some sort so it doesn't deteriorate. Let them do that. But to use my taxpayers' money to fix something that doesn't need to be fixed and then tell him no, he can't have $40,000 to protect his officers? I'm ashamed of every one of you that voted that way.
Anyone else? All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or comments, questions for the sheriff? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we need to clarify with a motion again?
Please.
The motion is for $5,000 in each of these line items.
Make a motion.
Counselor Womack?
Yes.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Counselor Steele?
Yes.
So.
Do a roll call vote.
We'll do a roll call vote. Chair.
Counselor Steele?
Yes.
Counselor Culp?
No.
Counselor Lykens?
No.
Counselor Womack?
Yes.
Counselor Keller?
Yes, but it needs to be more.
President Green?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel, and we'll work to address this over the next few months.
Thank you. We'll be in touch. Mr. Culp? The multiple departments.
Yes, counsel, this is longevity. Usually we do this earlier in the year, but I think first three months, we were working on the sheriff's department and longevity. So once I saw there was a month with no longevity request, we're requesting to reduce all the longevity balances that have a balance and increase the ones that are negative while your amount is zero. It'll end up in a net reduction in the general fund appropriations of $6,913.
Any question? So you're asking us to save money?
Yes.
That's a hard spell.
Please.
Any questions? I take a motion? Oh, actually, we need to publish a comment. I'm going to publish our comment with regard to your motion. Oh, yes, yes, thank you. Is there a motion regarding this item?
Make a motion to approve.
Counselor Culp, is there a second?
A second.
Counselor Womack? Okay.
Catherine Callahan, this is great. So there are $6,900 that Beaman should get tonight. An extra $6,900 right there. Shouldn't wait till next week, shouldn't wait. I'm telling you, something bad happens, this also sits on you guys in that sheriff's department.
Anyone else? You have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose. Motion carries. We have the salary ordinances. There are four, although the central dispatch wasn't presented, so there are three. This is the first reading for each one. The first we'll take is the chirp. That is 16,800 overtime, $10,000 out of the 8230 fund. Roll call.
Counselor Steele?
Yes.
Counselor Culp?
Yes.
Counselor Lykens?
Yes.
Counselor Womack?
Yes.
Counselor Keller?
Yes.
President Green?
Yes. The next one is the adult effective services. 9100, $1,462.56 for the group insurance. 2025, that's five F. Roll call?
Counselor Steele?
Yes.
Counselor Culp?
Yes.
Counselor Lykens?
Yes.
Counselor Womack?
Yes.
Counselor Keller?
Yes.
President Green?
Yes. Last is the courts. The ordinance 2025-5-G on the 9177 fund. Roll call, please.
Counselor Steele?
Yes.
Counselor Culp?
Yes.
Counselor Lykens?
Yes.
Counselor Womack?
Yes.
Counselor Keller?
Yes.
President Green?
Yes. Thank you. Public comment, do we have a list? Want to make your way forward, but. Yeah, don't forget, we need to make sure and sign the, sign the ordinances. Just a reminder. Oh. Oh, sorry. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Just a reminder, state your name and address. We're allocating three minutes. We're receiving information, not a discussion, and if you can be respectful of others in the room, that would be much appreciated.
That goes both ways. Catherine Callahan, if you could just, if you guys are looking at the commissioners and they're getting all this interest money and we don't want to take it to litigation because we know commissioners do that all the time, they enjoy that. I don't know how many lawsuits we have actively going on in Madison County, but it's a crazy number, and that's generally where most of their funds are going. So I would say we decrease their budget as, no matter how much money you give them out of that 500,000, next year their budget needs to be decreased. You give them 250, then you're going to give them, you're going to give them 250 less next year. The other thing is, is if we're going to give them money out of that interest, they get no more new money anywhere throughout the entire year. That commissioner's office has got to learn to live within their budget. ARBA was meant to help the people. Using this interest money to fix.
That would.